Good afternoon, Portland, and welcome, everyone, to our eighth of nine public hearings hosted by the Independent District Commission, seeking your input on the draft district plan. My name is Josh Florenti, he/him. I am serving as co-chair for this last phase of our work alongside fellow Commissioner and co-chair Dwayne Judd. Before I hand things off to our moderator to get things started, I just first want to thank all of you for making time to be here on this beautiful Saturday. This is really a historic moment for our communities to improve representation at City Hall, and this districting process does not happen without you, so I want to thank all of you for being here today. I will hand it over to our moderator to get us started.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ooh, that is a loud mic, so I'm gonna keep it low and slow. This way. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jamie, and I'll be moderating the session today. Before we begin the program, I want to make sure everyone has the ability to fully participate, so there's a few things I want to make sure you know. First, this meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be available online after it's over. So if you miss anything that's being said today, or you want to make sure your friends and family know about the hearings and have access to the great presentation that you'll hear today, you'll be able to find it at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. We also have American Sign Language and Spanish Interpretation available today, so if you'd like to avail yourself of those resources, you can see the staff at the table, and they can help you connect. And if you plan to testify today, and you haven't done so already, please sign up at the table so that we can get you into the queue and call you up in order when it's time. If you do not want to testify today, but you want to provide some feedback to the Commission, there are multiple ways in which you can do that, so I'm gonna walk through a few of those right now. First, you can submit your public comment by emailing the Commission, and that's at If you'd like to give verbal testimony over the phone, you can call 311, and they can accept your testimony in multiple languages. You can fill out a public comment card. You can just write your testimony here while you're in the room, and those public comment cards are in that direction, over there. Nicole's waving her hand. The materials are in the back of the room. Or there's a survey online that you can fill out, and you can find that survey at Or finally, if you just want to write a good old-fashioned letter and send it through the post office, you can do that, too. You can mail your written comments to the Office of Management and Finance, care of the Independent District Commission, at 1120 Southwest Fifth Avenue, 97204. However you decide to provide public comment, please make sure to do so before public comment period closes on Saturday, July 22. All right, that was a lot of information, so I'm gonna wrap up this intro by just quickly going over the agenda so you know what's coming next. So for our time together, the Independent District Commissioners will start with an educational presentation to give you an overview of their different maps and their proposal. This will take about 30 minutes. We will then open it up for public testimony and allow everyone the chance to speak until it's done, and then after testimony's over, the Commissioners will have some closing remarks for all of you. If we have time today, the Commission may be open to answering some questions, so we'll keep track of questions if you ask them during your testimony, and we may be able to take additional questions at the end. We will see how it goes. Okay, that's it for our opening, and now I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioners Van Sickle-Robins and Saxena to walk you through a presentation.
Thanks, Jamie. Can folks hear me? Awesome. So, good morning. My name is Nisha Saxena. I use she/her pronouns, and I want to welcome all of you today, and thank you for being here on this beautiful Saturday in the summer when there are many competing events for your time, so I appreciate that you're here to support your city. So before we hear from you, we're gonna present a short educational presentation about the District Commission's work to date. So currently, all of Portland's elected officials can live anywhere in the city, and they're elected by voters across the entire city. And so under this new system approved by voters in the November 2022 election, four geographic districts will be created, with three city councilors who reside in their district elected to represent each of those four districts. So there's gonna be a total of 12 district-based city councilors rather than the current five-at-large city councilors. So the Independent District Commission was created by voter-approved amendments to the city charter. It's tasked with preparing and adopting the district plan for city council elections, starting with the election of November 2024, so next, not this November, but the following November. This primarily involves working with the community and professional experts to design the district maps that will be in place until the next redistricting cycle in 2030, following the 2030 census. So the Independent District Commission consists of 13 voting members, as well as alternate and reserve alternate members. So all of us were selected through an open, community-wide application process, and then we were all appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council in January of 2023. So as the name suggests, the Independent District Commission is fully independent, is a fully independent community body authorized to create the district plan for the city of Portland. The District Commission has a unique authority. Oh, thank you. If nine out of the 13 voting commissioners approve the plan, then it's adopted and final. However, if after two votes, the District Commission can't reach the nine-vote supermajority, then the most recent version of the plan is referred to the city council for its consideration and adoption. Okay, so I'm gonna go over the timeline now. As the District Commission prepares the district plan, we're guided by the voter-approved charter requirements and state and federal districting laws. We must use the voter-approved district criteria and any additional criteria we set forth. We're required to hold nine public hearings. One public hearing was held early in the process before we developed the district plan to seek public comment on whether any additional planned criteria should be considered. And we voted not to add any additional criteria to those specified in the adopted charter measure because we didn't want to limit our ability to create additional maps. Eight public hearings must be held, two in each of the proposed district, before we vote to adopt the district plan. So this month, we've had, we're having at least eight public hearings. The draft district plan was made available to the community one month before the first of those eight public hearings and takes place on July 5. And we can't vote on the plan until one month after our last public hearing takes place on July 16. So between July 5 and July 16, we had a number of public hearings, and so we're actually holding nine public hearings because there was one Zoom hearing added to provide more opportunities for public input. The Commission must adopt its district plan by no later than September 1 of 2023, and so we've received questions from community members about whether we can take more time, but the timeline was established in the voter-approved measure. Okay, so the next few slides are somewhat technical, and we're sharing this so that you have a broad understanding of what guides our work, what the legal underpinnings are of our work. Creating initial districts and redistricting once a decade are processes controlled by two federal laws: the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act. So under the Equal Protection Clause, the creation of initial districts and the periodic updating of districts must be substantially equal in population, and this is the requirement known as one person, one vote. The primary tool used in the redistricting process is the federal census. The U.S. Constitution mandates a census every 10 years to count every resident in the United States. The census includes basic demographic data, including total population by age, race, housing status, and housing occupancy. Because district populations shift over time, district boundaries must be redrawn after the census is administered every 10 years to ensure that every person's vote remains equally weighted. We've received questions from community members asking us to consider how population in the city might shift in the future, but we must work with the data from the 2020 census and leave that to the next redistricting in 2030. So the Voting Rights Act of 1965 requires districts that do not discriminate on the basis of race, color, or membership in a protected language minority group. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act prohibits districting plans that are intended to be racially discriminatory or that are shown to have a racially discriminatory result. The Commission is required to create the district plan using the voter-approved district criteria, and as shared earlier, the Commission decided not to add criteria to those already approved. The voter-approved district criteria requires that the District Commission ensure that each district, as nearly as practicable, is first contiguous and compact, and that means that each district is one geographically connected piece without any unconnected elements. And the smallest element that we are working with to design these maps is a census block. Second, that we utilize existing geographic or political boundaries. And so that means natural or man-made boundaries, highways, mountains, rivers, and things that already divide communities and make innate borders. Or political boundaries, like legislative, county, or school district boundaries. And third, that we don't divide communities of common interests. And community of common interests are recognized by academics and jurisdictions throughout the country as groups that share a common policy concern and would benefit from being districted together. And dividing a community of common interest often leads to a decreased ability to advocate for the community's needs or priorities. And we're wanting help from all of you to help us determine what is a community of common interest. We also, one of the other criteria is that districts are connected by transportation links, and that means highways, roads, streets, or public transportation, and also that they are of equal population. And so that means that each district has the same number of people in it. And the Commission is working to create a district plan with less than 5% deviation in population between districts. The District Commission must also ensure that no district be drawn for the purpose of favoring any political party, incumbent, elected official, or any person, and diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. The criteria prescribed in the charter are similar to what's been upheld in federal courts regarding the formation of political districts across the country. In creating each district, data is used to define the criteria. So on the screen, you can see examples of some of the data sets that can help us define the district criteria. Some criteria require using specific data sets. For example, population and any Voting Rights Act-related issues must use the data released in the 2020 decennial census, and most recent American Community Survey. And the American Community Survey is an annual survey at a smaller scale than the census that compiles additional demographic and socioeconomic community data. And some data sets can be used to help define multiple criteria. For example, school district boundaries or high school enrollment areas could be considered an existing political boundary or a community of common interest because its quality and effectiveness of a shared concern. So the criteria regarding communities of common interest is where we most want community input from all of you. So you know how you define your community by your shared experiences and concerns, and we want to hear about those. The District Commission has been working with technical district consultants to add different data sets to help inform the district criteria. The data sets you see on the screen are not representative of all the data that the Commission has been using. Other data sets that we've looked at have included socioeconomic status, household income, voter precincts, public transportation routes, homeownership versus renters, and access to public goods and services, and much more. So the District Commission is committed to ensuring the districting process is transparent and community-driven. Portlanders have engaged in a variety of ways to inform the creation of these draft maps. We've already received over three and a half hours of public testimony, hundreds of public comments, and almost 200 draft map options submitted by members of the public through our online mapping tool, and that's still available if folks are wanting to continue to submit maps. Commissioners also attended community-led districting events, held individual meetings with community leaders, spent hours reflecting on what we've heard. The Commission has made a deliberate effort to center the voices of those who have not historically been part of city decision-making. And so with that background about the District Commission's work process and a little detail about our districting, so I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins to talk a little bit more specifically about these draft maps.
So as Commissioner Saxena said, on June 1, we released three draft maps outlining possible boundaries for the new districts for community consideration. And each of the maps, which we named Alder, Cedar, and Maple just to help differentiate between the three, adhere to the district criteria that voters approved last November and are directly informed by the community input that we had received prior to June 1. If you've had a chance to look at the three maps, you may have noticed that they share certain characteristics. For instance, all the communities that are east of I-205 are in a single district, which also includes the non-Portland Public School districts, which are Park Rose, Reynolds, David Douglas, and Centennial. The western border of that easternmost district runs along I-205 and 82nd in order to preserve the Jade District and Lentz neighborhood. Neighborhoods along the northern part of Portland are in a single district, with the exception of those neighborhoods, if you see the little tail that runs into the airport in the green district, that includes Park Rose School District boundary. The north and south sides of Columbia Boulevard are in a single district so that the residents on both sides of Columbia Boulevard are in the same district. Historic Albina in north and northeast Portland is preserved in a single north-northeast district. And all communities west of the Willamette River are in a single district, and we'll probably talk a little bit more about that during question-and-answer period or comments. But how are they different? All three maps must cross the Willamette River to achieve equal population criteria because the populated portion of the west side of the Willamette River is about 20,000 people short of what is needed to be an equally sized district. The Alder map crosses only in lower southeast to include the neighborhoods of Selwood, Westmoreland, Eastmoreland, and Reed. The Cedar map crosses along the entire edge of the river from I-84 South along transit corridors on Southeast 12th and the MAX line. And the Maple map crosses in the central east side from I-84 South to Powell and includes the Buckman and Kearns neighborhood and part of the Hosford-Abernathy neighborhood. And also, population needs to be balanced along the eastern boundary between the north-northeast and central-southeast districts, the yellow district up top and the teal district below. And the Alder map uses neighborhood boundaries and common high school enrollment areas to do that dividing. The Cedar map uses Sandy Boulevard as a transit boundary, and the Maple map uses a combination of both of those elements. So now I'll talk a little bit more about each map. So as I mentioned, the Alder map is built around preserving, to the largest degree possible, established neighborhood boundaries. It divides the central city among three different districts using the Willamette River and I-84 as boundaries to encourage engagement across districts with central city issues and economic opportunities, and also to distribute those significant public assets and institutions that are in that central area among more than one district. Neighborhoods in lower southeast, which I mentioned earlier, Eastmoreland, Reed, Selwood, and Westmoreland, they share a district with demographically and socioeconomically similar communities on the west side of the river and are connected by the Selwood and Ross Island bridges. So the Cedar map, as I mentioned, is built around prioritizing transit corridors as boundaries. So this map uses transit corridors, including northeast Sandy, southeast 12th, 82nd, and MAX lines, in recognition of the role they play in influencing the use of public space and notions of neighborhood on the eastern side of the city. Neighborhoods in the central east side and inner southeast that are bordered by the Willamette River on the west and major transit lines to the east, both bus and MAX, and connect by eight bridges to share a district with neighborhoods on the west side of the river. And the third map, the Maple map, is built around keeping much of the central city together, that central city as defined by the city's Central City 2035 Plan, while preserving historic albina. The central city includes the city's most densely populated and urbanized neighborhoods where residential and commercial uses are tightly interwoven. The east side neighborhoods with high percentages of renters, Buckmans, Kearns, parts of Hosford-Abernathy, share a district with west side renter-heavy neighborhoods like Goose Hollow, Old Town, University, South Waterfront, to name a few. So we are here primarily not to hear from ourselves, but to hear from you, and we have a lot of questions that we'd love to hear your reflections on, not just about the maps that we have shared, but also just how you view community. What elements really speak community to you and help you define for yourself what you consider your community? And these questions that are up on the slide are just a few of the things that we offer up as things you might want to share with us your thoughts on. So finally, as Jamie already said earlier, this is not the only opportunity for you to share those thoughts with us. There are, as she mentioned, comment cards in the back of the room that you can fill out and leave if you're not interested in stepping up to the mic to share those. You can submit comments of any type through July 22, and we have an online comment form at the Commission website. You can submit via email to the email address that's up on the slide. You can call 311, or you can actually put a stamp on a letter and send it to us in the mail to the address that's up above. So that concludes our presentation, and I'm gonna now pass it back to Jamie to start off the public testimony.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. So it is now time to move into public testimony, and as you heard from the Commissioners, they very much want to hear from you. I see at least 10 faces in this room. I'm hoping we get at least 10 people willing to step up to the mic today. But to ensure this is a welcoming space, whether you are testifying or not, we would appreciate if everyone today would follow some rules of conduct. So disruptive conduct, such as interrupting someone, or shouting out from your seats, or not ending your testimony at the allocated time, or using foul language, will not be allowed. If there are any disruptions, a warning will be given, and a further warning may result in you being asked to leave the meeting. So thank you for following these rules and helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome and making sure everyone has the opportunity to be heard. So I'm gonna check our signup sheet. It looks like we have five people. That's like a 50% ratio, almost. We're doing good. Hopefully, some of you will feel inspired after you hear your fellow Portlanders testifying and will also step up, because if you haven't signed up already, it's not too late. It's never too late. I'm gonna awkwardly ask you to think about testifying multiple times before this meeting is over, so be prepared. I am gonna call names two at a time, so the first name that you hear, that's your cue to come up and come up to the mic and testify, the second name I call should get ready and be prepared to be the next in line. You will each have three minutes to speak, and I'm gonna keep track of those minutes on my phone. Ooh, I put it in my pocket. I have chosen what I would consider to be a very pleasant chime, and I've received zero complaints that it is annoying. Feel free to tell me differently after the meeting if you think I should change it. When you speak, please state your name. Also, let us know your ZIP code or your neighborhood, if you prefer. If you are testifying on behalf of an organization, we would like to know that. And please identify the map that you are testifying about. And lastly, we ask that you please remember to go slowly for our interpreters. So I'm gonna do this a little differently because the first two names have actually requested to come up and testify together, so we're gonna give them kind of six minutes total amongst the two of them. So I'm gonna call them first, and then I will call the remainder. So first, we have Patrick Tice and RJ DeMello.
Wow, didn't expect to be first, but here we are. Hey, everybody. I'm Patrick Tice, Chair of the St. John's Neighborhood Association. I'm here with RJ, who is also on the board as vice chair. But I first wanted to start off and thank the Commission for all the thoughtful work that you have done specifically around this. We are very pleased with all three versions of the maps, actually, and the main reason being that we're keeping North Portland whole. I think that's something that we, as a board, have spoken about and heard from community members is extremely important. So just as an example, and where maybe that doesn't happen is right where at the end of a peninsula, very geographically kind of community-oriented, but we have not only St. John's, but also Cathedral Park. And then within the state redistricting that was done, there was some district maps that kind of split between Neighborhood Associations, so not only was Cathedral Park kind of carved off into a west side district, but also part of St. John's Neighborhood Association also being carved off. So there was some maybe disappointment, I think, from how that was handled. So we were definitely worried, I think, understanding that obviously the west side doesn't have enough population to meet the full criteria. So we were concerned as far as, you know, would North Portland and St. John's specifically be looked at? But we're very pleased, I think, with the fact that, you know, it's including as North Portland as whole. So our big thing, too, is, you know, definitely looking at common interests and, I think, where community resides. So I know that we do have some shared concerns with west side districts, specifically around the river, and kind of ecological concerns around that, which RJ will touch on here in a moment. But I do think, if you think of especially how the community lives, works, goes to school, goes to church, resides, it's extremely important to retain the fact that living in the communities out here, going to the west side district is a special trip, if you will. So really, where the majority of the community resides and exists is within this North Portland boundary. So I think that was really important, and again, thank you for considering that. I do want to just also say that I don't speak for all residents within St. John's. Obviously, we're trying our best to do outreach, but I think there's a lot of voices that are underrepresented, represented within the city of Portland, specifically in government. And I think by further dividing and separating out our North Portland peninsula would, you know, not allow those voices to be as represented and as heard. So again, want to just really thank you for keeping North Portland whole. And then I will say, too, with some of our other North Portland neighborhoods, we do ladder up to North Portland Neighborhood Services, based in Kenton. And so I think it's also important for us as the Neighborhood Associations to be able to speak to each other, to stay within the same boundaries and be equally represented, I think, at the city. So I think those were some of the pieces. Again, I don't want to be too non-decision-based, but I'm happy with all three maps. I think we, as a board, are not going to be specifically advocating for any of them. The really thing, the important thing that we're advocating for is to keep North Portland whole and specifically keep St. John's included in North Portland. It's extremely important to us. So wanted to thank you all, and I'll pass it over to RJ.
Yeah, thanks, y'all. Echoing what Patrick said, I appreciate your commitment to this process and taking this time and doing this for the citizens of Portland, being so thoughtful in how you've devised these maps, and I think that shows in what you put together and how easily it is to articulate, because I sit here, and it makes a lot of sense. I think just one sort of anecdote, we're talking about like community and how you define who the members are, or where they are, what you consider being part of a community. I know there's a big issue around a pool in North Portland, and I always think about if anybody's talking about putting any neighborhoods in North Portland into a west side district or another district, if that pool, if you were expected to go across the river to go to the pool, I don't think anybody would be too happy about that. This is the community with a common interest here in North Portland, and it makes sense to keep it whole, as Patrick mentioned. That's our main priority. We have heard one or two voices in other Neighborhood Associations talking about trying to be part of that west side district. Again, for those sort of like ecological concerns, the tanks along the river, and having a district that really has a strong sort of lobby towards that, the one point I would make to that is... the one point I would make to that is if you have everything along the river, well, around those tanks in one district, that's up to three city council members caring, necessarily caring about or hearing about those tanks. With the districts as they're drawn now in these three draft maps, you could have six city council members caring about those tanks, hearing about them, advocating for them. So it actually increases the power of the community that's concerned about that area by keeping it drawn as it is, rather than trying to put any of these North Portland districts onto the west side. So that is it for me. Thank you so very much again.
Thank you very much. I'm going to reset my timer. Okay. So the next two people who've signed up to testify are Debbie Kitchen, followed by Susan Lindsay.
Hi, I'm Debbie Kitchen. And I live in Sullivan's Gulch neighborhood, so this is my district on all three maps. But first of all, I served on the charter commission, and I just want to commend all of you for the fantastic work you've done here on the districting commission. The opportunities for engagement, the thoughtful approach, the tools that were provided by having the mapping and overlays and things that people could explore for themselves, you know, how to weigh different considerations. I thought that was really fantastic and a great opportunity for people to weigh in with a lot of knowledge and tools available to them. So certainly appreciate that. And I know it's a lot of work. I know you've been in a real short timeframe and just appreciate all of it and your willingness to even add an extra, you know, opportunity for people to weigh in by having the online meeting. Just great work. I think you had a very thoughtful, balanced approach. And I liked that you showed three different options that kind of look at different ways of dividing up the city. I think that helps organize the comments. Personally, I'm in favor of Alder. I feel like it balances public assets over more districts. And it also follows neighborhood boundaries most. As you've heard, I think in a lot of the testimony, there's a very strong commitment to neighborhoods and that as a way to organize comments. I feel like MAPLE, by combining all the public, or most of the public assets in one district, is actually what I would say the worst choice. I think that's not a good public policy. I think it doesn't give communities across the city as many opportunities to be engaged. So those are my comments. But I also just want to say that I appreciate all the work you're doing. And I think it's really unfortunate now at City Hall that they're considering other alternatives midstream of this with no public process, with, you know, a possibility of derailing all the effort that's been done. And it guts proportional representation, which is more inclusive, based on equity and representation for historically underrepresented groups. So, and it's slating it for a low turnout election. A special election in November might have 35% or 33% turnout versus 65%, over 65% that happened in November of 2022 when charter reform was passed. So I just think it's a travesty that that's being suggested now. And I hope that people will support staying with the program that we have and going ahead with implementation. Thank you.
Well timed, Debbie. Thank you. The next two on our list are Susan Lindsay, followed by Vadim Mazursky.
Good afternoon. It's good to see you from our Zoom call yesterday, where I was in the waiting room going, when are they going to send me the invite? I'm Susan Lindsay, and I'm the co-chair of the Buckman Community Association. And I don't come empty-handed today. I actually bring a letter that's been discussed multiple times and approved by the board and the association. So I've given that to the staff member there. As you know, or as some of you know, first of all, I want to say thank you for your public service. I know you're getting a tiny bit of a stipend. I heard that. Somebody who's been doing public service for a long time and has never gotten a dime. I'm impressed that you got a stipend. But I know how much of a sacrifice it is, especially in July, how beautiful it is outside today and you're here. So thank you for that. These three maps, you've asked us to look at these three maps and to pick one, or to have some comments about them or discuss them in terms of the community. We have. We've done that since you released them, the first part of June. We met and discussed, we were discussing them prior to June about what might happen. And when we saw the maps, we were happy and appalled, okay? So happy, we chose Alder. And why did we choose Alder? Because we had already chosen Alder prior to you releasing the maps because we thought it made the most sense socio-economically and stability-wise and putting likes together. Maple, we were appalled. And why were we appalled? We were appalled because the very vulnerable, progressive, young renter-heavy neighborhoods of Buckman and Kearns were being lumped with the entire west side and being cut off from their communities of common interest that they've been together with for decades and do things with. Don't think of, you shouldn't think of the same sides of the Willamette River in Selwood and John's Landing as similar in Buckman. It's not the same at all. We have I-5. It's an enormous barrier. We're always looking east from I-5. And also, finally, the Cedar Plan, which I have to say is based on transportation corridors. I have to tell you, I live in Buckman. I've been living in Buckman for decades. Since when is Southeast 12th Avenue a major transportation corridor? It is not. It certainly isn't in Buckman. Yes, a bus runs down it, but that's about it. I would, it's not like there's a max line. It's not even like there's a bike lane there. So it's not. We are very well-connected to the central east side. There are assets there that are critically important. They're east side assets. And so we see that Cedar kind of takes the east side assets and adds them to the very asset-rich, heavy west side. So to tag on to what Debbie just said, yes, now there's discussion about reducing the number of representatives. Even more of a reason why we want to get rid of Maple and Cedar maps. Why do we want to get rid of Maple? Because already you're taking a small, tiny portion of the east side, lumping it into the entire west side in order to hit your population needs and boundaries. However, if you do that and there's fewer representatives, that's an even greater inequity and disenfranchising issue. Please read my letter. We're going all in on Alder, as I've said before. And we're doing it not for personal reasons. We're doing it because we think it makes the most sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Last name on the list is Vadim Mazursky.
Thank you for pronouncing that name correctly. I appreciate it. Like everybody else around here, I want to thank everybody that is present today. You volunteered your time. I, myself, have been on several committees, and it is a lot of time. It's a lot of responsibility. And so I appreciate you being here and doing the work. I am a resident of Goose Hollow Neighborhood Association. I'm the president of the Goose Hollow Neighborhood Association and also the president of Neighbors West-Northwest, which is a coalition of 12 neighborhood associations in West Portland. I come here in my own capacity to talk to you about uniting the city of Portland. What I hear a lot from my neighbors, from neighbors across the river, is that people feel that Portland is divided. People want to have a representation that represents their communities, their neighborhoods, and unites their common needs. You're tasked with dividing Portland into four districts. And that's a very important task. But I ask you, please do not divide Portlanders along with the districts. What we have right now, and I've spoken with Susan, is people saying we don't want to be part of the west because we feel our votes will not count. I agree. I agree. The maps are all interesting maps, but they're all very similar. It takes a little part of northeast, wherever that might be, adds it on to the west. So far, we have the Southeast Bee, a newspaper that's been around for over 100 years that's endorsed the Maple map. We have Buckman and Kearns that have endorsed the Alder map. I've talked to the neighborhood association leaders in all those neighborhoods. None of them want to be with West Portland because their votes will not count. Let's unite Portland. There is a better way. I live in Goose Hollow, so when I hear that socioeconomics was taken into consideration and using the Alder map, I want to say that our median income is, and I just looked this up today, $37, $58,000, which is almost half of Eastmoreland. 75% renters, 41% rent burdened. Downtown, $37,000 median income, 45% rent burdened. Old Town, $25,000, almost a quarter of the income of Eastmoreland and likewise, much more rent burdened than the rest. There is a better way. There's a way to unite Portlanders. And I ask you this, and I know it's been considered, and I know about a third of the maps had it, but split up the west district. Equalize the votes between the east-northeast and the northwest-southeast and the southeast. One of the maps does a great job of doing it, map 189935. Please write that down, 189935. What I like about that map is it keeps contiguous, the neighborhood association boundaries, keeps exactly the same demographics with respect to white populations in the north, in the east, and everywhere else, as well as black populations, Latino populations, and Asian populations in all those. Retain St. John's and the north. In fact, the northeast would have about 2/3 of the vote in the west district, the northwest district. And what it does is makes people united and people would be represented, not because of their demographics, not because of their income, not because of how much their house is worth, but because we live in one Portland and have separate, but unique and united needs. Please consider that. And I know a third of the maps had it, so please look at those maps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vadim. We have no more people signed up on the list, but I'm scanning the crowd because I know some of you have been inspired by what you've heard and would like to provide some comments. I'm going to give it a few seconds. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to testify? Yes, please, come up to the mic. Just a reminder to state your name and your neighborhood and...
I'm Larry Jacobson, he/him. And I live in Eastmoreland, and I'm really glad to be here. I was at the one a couple nights ago. And that was extremely informative and getting to feel like, almost like I know you guys a little bit and comfortable. And I really appreciate the process that you've gone, you know, that you're doing this as a service to the city. And I think about how, in some ways, I don't know how, we won't really know how much this matters in that, okay, my first hope is that however we divide the city, all councilors or commissioners, whichever it's called, have the whole city's interest at heart. So they're not just strictly having a, you know, four-way civil war and thinking that this, you know, our neighborhood has this interest and this one has another. What I see here with these four maps is that it's, I mean, three maps, it's trying to figure out, because the west side doesn't have as many people, we gotta pull something off the east side. But quite clearly, as the last speaker said, I mean, we really have identifications with a certain area. And by going to these meetings, what I heard the other night about Park Rose and its neighboring area and what I've heard about St. John's and why they wouldn't want to be put into the wet peninsula, or whatever that, anyway, totally makes sense. And clearly, and like, as he said, the Selwood Bee, I mean, I live in the northeast corner of Eastmoreland. And for me, Woodstock is my neighborhood. And I'm a very active member of our neighborhood emergency team, which is Fire Station 20 and serves the southeast area. When I go places, the transit is that goes east-west, all goes to the east. I certainly, I don't know if there is anything that goes across the Selwood Bridge. One minute, thanks. And actually, if you cross, I had to look it up. What is the neighborhood on the other side of the Selwood Bridge? I think it's called South Portland, but there's also some that's an unclaimed. I mean, mostly, it's a big cemetery. And so we're all oriented to the southeast. I don't know what, you know, politically, it's not that I say we have a greater claim at all to staying on the east than all of these other, I think we all do. And I kind of, or I wonder what, it seems like there's contortions being done to serve, like making that equal populations is the highest principle that we're trying to serve. And I just wonder how much leeway is there? Like, how much could it be smaller? You know, how little could you take from the east side and achieve a population in the western and be within a reasonable? And thank you. But then hearing about the new map, wow, that's fascinating. Maybe there is a totally different way that preserves the neighborhoods. Thank you. It's great to be here.
Thank you, Larry. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to testify? Who may be so moved? Awkward eye contact. All right, I'm not seeing or hearing anybody. I also did not, you did not receive any questions during testimony. So I think what we're going to do is officially, or I guess I should state this before I officially close it. Once we close public testimony, we can't reopen it. So if you would like three minutes, now is your time. If you've already spoken, we ask that you kind of write it down or send it to us one of the other ways. But we can take questions once I close public testimony. So I just want to let you sit with that for a minute. Make sure there's nobody else that wants the three minutes to say their piece. You've already spoken.
Yeah, so I don't have a testimony. I just have some questions.
You just questions, okay. Then I'm going to officially close public testimony at this time. We're no longer taking three-minute testimony today. But we will be able to open up for questions. So as long as the commission's okay with that, would you like to start? Yes, please, if you could come to the microphone because we are recording. And state your name.
Yeah, so my name is Susan Sealy. I'm from Rose City. So I wasn't able to get to the other locations, July 5th and 6th, that probably would have touched on my neighborhood, Rose City Park. So my question is, have, during those other testimonies, have you been gathering all the questions or testimonies from those locations? So I can go back and look at that information.
Yes, absolutely. It will all be online on the district commission website.
And when would that be, that I could read?
When will it be uploaded?
Yeah, all those testimonies and questions. Because then I might come to the next one and have something to say. Oh, so that, but that's after the close of the...
That's right.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Come to the mic.
I just want to respond to that last question and say, we really want to hear what you think and what you say, what you believe and what you would like us to hear, regardless of whether other folks have shared similar or differing things. So I would strongly encourage you to either come tomorrow and share public testimony then, or submit written testimony, or all of the myriad ways that is an option. But we value your opinion regardless of what other folks in your neighborhood have shared. Yeah, thank you.
Hi. So my question is, I've attended several of these hearings. And since two of the maps so dramatically affect our neighborhood, I mean, one cuts it in half and the other one takes the entire one and puts it on the west side. And the other one affects Selwood, Eastmoreland, Westmoreland. How come none of the hearings have been in those areas? I mean, I have traveled for miles around to come to these things, and it's fine. I mean, I did my student teaching at Roosevelt High School. I'm very familiar with North Portland. I've lived in all parts of Portland. But I'm just curious as to why the decision was made. Was it the public infrastructure isn't there? Or why was there no, were there no hearings centered in the areas that are the most affected? Because many of those maps, as you know, are very similar. And so here we are in North Portland, but North Portland basically doesn't change in any of those maps. So why weren't the hearings in the places that are kind of under debate? Thank you.
Commissioner Van Sekel-Robins.
So this isn't, this isn't going to be a great answer for you, but we, the voter measure prescribed where we had to hold the hearings. So we had to do two each in each district. And so in areas where the district boundaries overlapped and there was a possible location that wasn't in the other districts, it precluded certain locations. The other thing is that initially, we were hoping to do hybrid meetings at each location. And a lot of locations, for various reasons, didn't have the capacity during the summer to have us do hybrid locations. So there were just some location issues as well that we had to deal with as we were trying to set this up. But we are trying to augment the public hearings with as many, we're responding to every request that comes in from organizations or neighborhood groups where they'd like a briefing or they'd like us to be on a panel with neighborhood association members or whatever. We're trying to respond to all of those and provide those... We're trying to respond to all of those and provide those, that opportunity.
Thank you. Is there another question? Sir?
The question, or the issue was brought up by a commenter just two people ago regarding permitting the numbers of people in the voting districts to vary. And my question is, is there a legal limit exactly how close they need to be every 10 years when the, when those districts are set? Is it plus or minus 5% or plus or minus 16? What criteria is required regarding numbers of people?
Can you please share your name with us? Sir?
Sir, your name for the record?
Bill Harris.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill, for the question. So, yeah, the districts being substantively equal in population is one of the criteria that we are guided by in drawing these maps. If you were to perfectly divide the population of Portland into four districts, you would have approximately 163,000 people in each of those districts. Based on legal precedent, we are allowed about 10% deviation from that 163,000 number. So if you look at the most populated district relative to that 163,000 number, and your least populated district relative to that 163,000 number, that total deviation can't be more than 10%. And each of these maps has a deviation that is under 5%. Kimmy, did I get that right? Yeah, thumbs up. Awesome. So, yeah.
Any other answers? Commissioner Chisholm.
Just to do the math for you, so 16,000 people, right? Variation between the most and the least populated. So 8,000 off of that 163 is as far as you can go, up or down. The West Side is about 20,000 folks short of 163,000, about 143,000, 144,000 folks. So you literally, if you're going to do a single district on the West Side, which you may not want to do, but if you were going to do that, you have to add something on the East Side. That's just going to be how the math is going to work. You're 20,000 short, and you can't have any more than 8,000 short, so that's the number.
Thank you, Commissioners. Did I see another hand for a question? Oh, Vadim?
Easy question here. What's the cutoff date for providing testimony online?
Saturday, July 22nd.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And yeah, tomorrow is the gay pride festivities, so if anybody is out there, I'll miss the testimony tomorrow, but come on out. But I'm hoping to submit some more online, so thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Please.
I'm still Larry Jacobson, and if you are writing it down, it's spelled with an S-O-N. Yes, my question is, so my understanding is that it's a supermajority, that, so nine, and I'm wondering, maybe these are, okay, I'm wondering if you all, from your deliberations, feel like a supermajority with these three maps is possible? And if that's something that you'd tell us which way it may be headed? And another thing is, I'm also curious to know the positions, if the commission members are, feel free to state which maps they prefer, so that we could hear who is advocating for A, B, and C, Maple Cedar, whatever, Alder.
Interesting question. Commissioner Chisholm.
That's a great question.
And I say it because transparency was a word that came out strongly, and so that would be in the service of it.
Thank you. I think each of us probably have, went into this process with our favorites, you know, with some, I think the folks who worked on all of Cedar and Maple are all sitting at this table, sort of the primaries, or, you know, drivers of those conversations. Each of them, of course, is a collaborative effort, both among members of the commission and members of the public that we've been working with. I will say that for me, it's really important to me that this public feedback get into my head first. This is the third of these hearings that I've been able to personally attend, and I'm going to be watching every single hearing on recording to catch up with them. I was out of the country for some of them. And so it's really important to me to like, hear what everyone had to say. There's a lot of written testimony, I'll be consuming all of that. That's why there's a month between the last hearing, there's a month between the last hearing and the, and our, the first, our first opportunity to start voting, so that we can consume all of it. So I love your desire to do a, you know, a whip count here and figure out where are we. You know, I kind of want to do that too, as a political professional, but no, it's really important that we consume the public feedback, do a lot of the other kinds of community meetings that folks are asking us to do, and really sit with it, I think, and digest it. I don't know that one of these three maps will be the final map. It's very plausible that we're going to find a way to, you know, I don't know, draw a compromise, but take in all the feedback and do something slightly different to address some of these concerns that we've been hearing, so.
Especially if you get a supermajority.
We got to get to nine. We got to get to nine. That's right, out of 13. So we'll see.
Commissioner Saxena, then Hanson.
I'm like, too short for this mic. Here we go. I'm also very much in listening mode and am taking in as much as possible. I want to really emphasize that these three draft maps are drafts, they're very much drafts. We're still, you know, the online mapping tool is still available, people can still submit maps, please, like, if you have, I mean, we've heard some really helpful testimony from folks who live in various neighborhoods about like, hey, could we move this boundary a couple of blocks? And that, that's extremely helpful for us to know, to understand how people view their communities. It was super helpful when someone basically told us, gave us a map number, and said, "Look at this map, and here's the map number." Because I'm, you know, the first thing I do when I get home is I'm going to look at that map and be like, oh, that, is that something we should be considering as well? So we're very much, or at least, speaking for myself, I'm very much in listening mode and am wanting to take in as much information and feedback as possible. You know, and we, you know, we have until the end of August to come up with nine votes, but I think, I think we're all listening right now. So thank you, I appreciate the question a lot.
Commissioner Hanson.
And the one thing with your question about will we reach a supermajority, I think that, well, I'm an alternate and non-voting member, but have been involved with the process alongside everyone, and I do think that there is a shared commitment to making a decision before the September 1st deadline, because if this body does not reach a supermajority by then, the latest map that we have voted on will go to City Council. And I, we have heard at other hearings that folks, whatever the decision is, that they would like it made by us. And so I do think there is an agreement that we would like to come to an agreement, which is an important first step.
And I would just like to say, if you haven't had time or an opportunity yet to go on to our website and play with the mapping tool, I really encourage it. I'm a lifelong Portlander, I grew up here in North Portland, I live in Hillsdale now. I learned a lot about the city of Portland that I didn't know by going on the mapping tool. And one of the things that's really quirky, but we have to use, is census blocks, and they don't always make sense with neighborhood boundaries that are drawn, that are already drawn, that Civic Life uses. And so we've gotten really good feedback from some neighborhoods where they're saying, you know, "This is a weird boundary that you're using because of the census blocks, and we would prefer if you added this small little triangle, because this is really how we view the community and it's part of our neighborhood." So all of that information, I would say, we're likely to adopt, at least from my perspective. Those little tweaks, I think, are really easy things for us to do in modifying our maps.
Anybody else? Okay. Please.
Yeah, just briefly here, and just a quick question. So I know we're all speaking about maps and focusing on that, but as far as that September deadline, I'm a little curious, and I'm sure I could look it up, and there's information online as well, but like, what are truly like the next steps? I think one of the things that we've run into in outreach is extremely difficult, as I'm sure you all know, especially getting into, you know, communities that may be underserved, and getting folks to weigh in on some of these proposals. So I'm seeing some of the outreach numbers, or some of the engagement numbers, and they're maybe smaller than I would have anticipated with this whole process. So I'm wondering, like, as we pick a map, as we go forward, and we're working with the state, the county, as far as like, the election process, like, there's going to be a massive amount of need to have outreach and explaining this, because, I mean, I'm a political nerd, I love this stuff, so I'm very invested in this, and I'm sure we all are in this room, but like, how do you explain this entire process in a digestible manner? I mean, even as a Neighborhood Association, we're talking about doing that, explaining range choice voting, multi-member districts, what these districts are, like, I've heard a lot of community members, even when they get the pamphlet in the mail, they're like, what even is this about? Like, does anyone even know? So I'm just curious, like, what are the next steps post-map being selected, as far as getting that out prior to the 2024 election?
Who would like to answer? Commissioners? Commissioner Hanson.
There's somebody here from the Government Transition Advisory Committee. Is he still here? Did he ta, okay, never mind. There is a body, so Sophia in the back, raise your hand, great, can connect you with the Government Transition Advisory Committee, which is a new body that has been created relatively recently to address that exact question. What does education look like? What does implementation look like? All of that. And that particular question is outside the scope of this particular body, but GTAC will start to have public meetings, and I'm sure they are, like, I know that they are really focused on community engagement in a meaningful way. Anything to add? Go ahead.
Yes, all of that, but I'll also add this. You know, in these maps, when there's a map, we will be having an election in November of 2024 with 12 City Council seats up. I anticipate four dozen candidates. Who will be the ones out there communicating, "Hi, we live, you know, I want to represent your district." So in addition to the formal stuff that Marta was talking about, you're going to have a whole lot of political campaigns out there, all communicating, along with, "Please vote for me, this is what district you're in, and, you know, that's why you should vote for me." So we're going to, Portlanders will not be able to miss this story by the fall of '24.
Another question?
RJ Demello, again. My question, closer, sure. My question is, you know, was brought up about having the West Side actually be into two districts, and, you know, we've talked about, this has been a very in-depth and thorough process, and so I'm sure that that has come up before and been talked about at least and considered, and so I'm curious if it has, what, why you said no to that and to these three maps? Like, yeah, maybe there's a good reason already in that we can also consider after hearing the compelling testimony of Vadim earlier, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lorette?
So thank you for the question. So after, you know, in response to community members who asked us to keep the districting criteria the same, by that point, we had several hundred different map concepts that had been submitted on our online tool, and we worked with our consultants to kind of categorize those maps into different themes. And what I would say is that, you know, regardless of how you district communities on the West Side of the River, there is a population challenge that needs to be met somehow. If you were to keep the West Side altogether, as we've mentioned, that's about 20,000 Portlanders short, the more you split the West Side, the more, I would say, curious, you know, constituencies that you're starting to put together. So when we looked at those different map concepts, I think, you know, there was a feeling that this might be a potential way forward, but I would also emphasize that no conclusions have been reached by this point. There's still more voices to be heard in this process, and, you know, if Portlanders have asked us to go back to the drawing board to consider different ways to split the West Side population, we'll take that in under advisement. But there is just a population challenge that needs to be met, and with these three draft maps, we offered different considerations about how to do that, but keeping the West whole was a common theme that we really wanted to get feedback on, so we're still, we're still listening.
Any other answers?
You know, as Josh said, Commissioner Lorette said, it gets kind of nutty when you start splitting the West Side. First of all, recognize that Forest Park is largely depopulated, so when you're talking about the West Side, the population is almost entirely the south end of the West Side, and so if you're going to cut that in half, you're talking then about doing things like, you know, connecting perhaps Goose Hollow with Mount Tabor, or, you know, sort of Hillsdale all the way across to Lentz. And I see Vadim Mazursky giving me a thumbs up over there, but, you know, it starts to, I mean, I think you'd have a lot more people saying, "That doesn't make any sense to me." I don't know. I would encourage everyone to play with the mapping tool, because it becomes a really, a really interesting puzzle when you try and do it. It's just four districts. You know, if we had eight, or 12, or 16, one time I made a map of 32 districts just for fun, to see what it would look like, and then you start to get some really coherent pieces, right? St. John's is just one district. But with four districts, they're kind of really kind of gross tools, it's a lot to move around.
Yeah, and just one other thought that I wanted to add, and I think that, like, the folks from St. John's have touched upon this, is once you get kind of north, your transportation options are really limited in terms of bridges. So it does, it was creating kind of wonky districts when we consider the north part of the city in particular, where there's just so few bridges connecting east and west.
Before you come up again, Susan, is there anyone here who'd like a question, who hasn't spoken, who hasn't testified, who hasn't asked a question? I just want to save some space for anyone in the audience who has not yet had a chance to talk. Not seeing any. Okay, please.
So last night, we hosted a movie in the park, which was something that we'd worked on for months and months and months and months, and it was a smash, and hundreds of people came. And I got a chance to kind of circulate around a little bit and ask people from Buckman, Kearns, Hoxton, Abernathy, in, you know, inner southeast neighborhoods, what they knew about this, and it was surprising how confused people were. They were very confused, and I'm sure you know this, right? So I guess my question is this, if public testimony closes in a week, what is the best means to tell people if they have an opinion to use? I mean, are you all kind of, I mean, I saw that 311 is being floated, so I'm assuming you can call 311 and have somebody, are you going to a recorder? I'm not sure what you're doing. But what works best for you all to receive testimony, or comments? What works best? Because I hear over and over again about the maps, but I can promise you, there are a lot of people that are not going to go on there and spend hours playing around with the maps. They're going to take a look at your three draft maps, and they're going to say, okay, they want our opinion, so, you know, we're going to have an opinion. But what is the best means? You've made several means, or is that's what the staff is doing, is making sure that it's all coming in one certain way? I just don't know. So that's my question.
That's right. Commissioners, do you have a preference about...
So many attachments, so many attachments.
Have you found one avenue easier to receive than another? Staff do work pretty hard to kind of coalesce all of the testimony from the various locations and inputs, and make sure it's provided to the Commissioners in a comprehensive packet and to the public online. Okay. It sounds like all of, all options. Commissioners, I'm going to, I think, wrap up this part of the session, and I think this is the time when we're going to move into closing remarks. So is there any Commissioners who would like to provide some closing thoughts, some reflections?
Well, I'll just, I'm sure I speak for everyone for just expressing gratitude and appreciation for all of you sharing your thoughts on a sunny Saturday. I will say, for folks who are in the room who didn't speak at the mic, or if something else popped up for you, we do have some posters at the back of the room where you can share your thoughts on a Post-It. When you look at the maps, what do you like about them? What do you wish were different? And what new ideas do you have? And we have some stickers in the back also, in case you would like to do a straw poll. If it were up to you today, would you pick Alder, Cedar, Maple, or none of the above? Just kind of another mechanism for us to collect testimony and/or thoughts, specific thoughts from folks who didn't share at the mic. But thank you all so much for being part of this process.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners? Anything else, commissioners? I see, I see some chatting at the end. Commissioner Judd? We have not heard your voice today.
We also wanted to thank the Charles Jordan Center for having us here today. We do really do appreciate the support that each one of these community centers are giving us to have these discussions. Thank you very much.
Of course. All right. I think we're going to wrap up then. I do want to thank the interpreters who provide such an invaluable service to everybody. I want to thank the staff who helped put this together. And of course, all of you who have come out to testify today. Thank you so much. And of course, as Commissioner Judd mentioned,